So my mic's on and those three are not hearing me.
Okay. All right, Rich, you're gonna call in.
I see Angie typing in the chatroom. Angie, do you wanna post the number in the chatroom?
Yeah, if you have that.
Sorry for the delay, everybody. God bless technology.
Hi, Sean. Say, Sean, we're gonna call in. So Angie's gonna put the number on the chat for you to call in. Oh, okay, I'll give you the number.
When we would bring the calls in.
Can't see his screen. Okay, hold on a second. Oh.
Turn around right here.
Oh, yeah, okay, I've got the number for you. Are you ready? Four zero eight, four one eight, nine three eight eight. Eight, four zero eight, four, four one eight, nine three eight eight. Okay, I've got one for Argentina too, or Australia, but this is...
Anybody hear me?
All right, and then I got the event number for you.
Hello.
Once you get in. Okay, get in there.
Hello.
Yeah, then you can go use it when it asks you for the the location or the event, then I'll give you the number.
I don't know what else to do.
Hello.
Well, you might be able to. All right, let me go ahead and give it to you then. Here it is. Twenty-four eighty-three, nine, nine twelve.
Hello.
Just nine twelve. Okay, I gotta go back and get the other. Gotta get the other. Hold on a second, they just, I just lost it. What were the last four digits on that? On the event?
Nine, three, eight, eight.
Nine, three, no, that's on the phone number.
Yeah, what do you need?
What about the event? Doesn't he have to plug the event in?
Oh. I don't think so.
Because when he calls at number one, it asks what number you need for the event?
No, it doesn't say that.
Up on the top.
It was on what Deb had.
Hold on, Sean.
It was on what Deb had up.
I'm waiting for it. Jeff, you don't have the event number, do you? Deb? Deb? Can we see the event number? Okay, Sean, here it is again.
Angie and Deb?
Okay.
Oh, I hear.
Nine twelve, and then zero four nine one. All right, good luck with it. Okay, all right, bye.
Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
That's not the issue.
Hello.
Rich, we got you.
That's not the issue. The issue is he can't hear us.
Can you hear us, Rich? Rich, can you hear me?
He's not on his phone, so he's not hearing us. He needs to pick up his cell phone and call that phone number.
Rich?
Should I hop in my truck and drive here? Can you delay the meeting by twenty minutes?
We'll have to.
We need a quorum.
We need a quorum.
Unless, Rich, did you try, are you on your phone?
Did you try, are you on your phone?
I'm on my phone right now. I tried to, I did exactly what you said, back all the way out, came back in. It shows my mic is hot. I can't hear anybody. Nobody's responding when I speak. I'm speaking right now, nobody's responding. If they could hear me or not.
Just a second.
Just a second. Did you dial that four?
Four zero eight, number four one eight.
Nine three eight eight.
Nobody told me any number to dial.
Okay, here we go. All right, here's what you're gonna do.
Here we go, all right, here's what you're gonna do. Okay, you ready to go?
Okay, write it down. Okay, I got a pencil, give it to me.
Four zero eight.
Four zero eight.
Four one eight.
Four zero. Four one eight.
Nine three eight eight.
Nine three eight eight.
Hey, no, here's the event.
Hey, no, here's the event number.
I put it in chat.
Twenty-four eighty-three.
Twenty-four eighty-three.
Nine twelve.
Nine twelve.
Nine twelve.
Zero four nine one.
Zero four nine one. That's on, I'll do that, okay.
Is Jason on?
He cannot hear us. Sean cannot hear us. Nobody can hear us.
Anybody there?
No, I hear somebody. Is this Sean?
Sean, can you hear me?
Hello.
Hi, it's Sean, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna dial in on my phone and see if I can get through. Well, I'm hearing you on my mic.
That's crazy, because I have you on my phone. And on my computer, but my computer audio is working just for you. And my screen keeps going black, off and on, black, off and on.
Oh. But nobody else is responding, if they can hear me. So you're the only one that can hear me.
Hear their response.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna dial in and work off my cell here and see if I can get through.
Rich, I can hear you.
There's somebody. Is that you, Deb?
Yes.
How about anybody else?
We can hear you, but you can't hear us.
Yeah. Joe, um, Jeff is confirming they can hear you in the room, but you can't hear us.
Right.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Should I go with my phone? Joe gave me the...
Yep, go with your phone.
Okay, I'll do that.
All right.
Welcome to WebEx. Enter your access code or meeting number, followed by pound.
Ask Sean or Rich if they are willing to come to the meeting, because we need a quorum. We need one more person in the room. I'm chatting, but no one's responding to my chat.
Enter your attendee ID number, followed by pound. If you do not know your attendee number...
Rich and Sean, can you hear me?
I can.
I can hear Sean.
I hear both of them.
So they're looking for one more person. So can somebody drive in? I don't know. I could, I can drive in. Can you delay the meeting?
It's already delayed.
Delay the meeting, I'll be there in twenty minutes.
I can be there in less.
Dick? Sean, are you heading on? Are you heading up, Sean?
I don't know. If Dick is going, I don't have to, but I could be there in ten minutes.
We can start with Sean and then Rich can come.
All right, I'll see you in a few. I'm gonna just unplug this computer.
Can you hear us now, Rich? Guys, can you hear us now?
Do not start, do not start without me.
I can hear you.
Guys, can you hear me in the room right now?
Yes.
Jason can hear me? Sean can hear me?
Yes, I can.
Then we got a horn.
I can hear Heidi.
They can hear me. Testing, this is Angie.
I can hear Angie.
Okay.
Heidi, say test.
Test, test.
Can you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, so they can hear Heidi and Angie, they can hear us. The only one that can't hear us right now is Rich. And guys, you can hear me, this is Jeff, correct?
Correct.
Yes, this is Sean.
So Sean and Jason can hear me.
Yes.
So I'm gonna hang up the phone and go back to the computer.
Shall I tell Rich to get back to the computer?
No, you need to stay on the phone to hear, I think.
Yeah.
I can hear my computer.
Actually, I have them both on my computer and phone as well.
Okay, well, then you go back and then if you don't hear us, then obviously call back on the phone then.
Okay.
What should we do about Rich?
Let him come.
All right.
That'll teach him next thing.
Just a quick announcement. Thank you all for your patience. We've been having a lot of these meetings virtually since the pandemic started, and this is honestly the first time we've had this problem. So I apologize to make you sit here longer than you had to. But we'll get started. It's not a reflection on our planning commission technology. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you for that, Angie. Okay, Deb, are we ready to roll in? Have everything on muted? Got it. Okay, we'll call the January two thousand twenty-two Stearns County Planning Commission meeting to order. We'll rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, as Angie explained, this is gonna be kind of a hybrid. Some members are viral, some people are virtual, some people are coming, so it's a free-for-all. Um, we're gonna do a roll call of the Planning Commission members. Uh, if I call your name and you can hear us, say aye, or yes, or something. Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Ken Mossman is here. Mike Perrell is here. Rich Blankish is on his way. And I'm Jeff Bertram, I obviously can hear and talk. And we have Commissioner Joe Persky. Uh, Jason Cron is excused for tonight's meeting. Um, the way we do this is we'll we're gonna do some procedural stuff here. But just so everybody knows how we do this, when we call up the application, if the applicant's here, come up to the front. If you're the public and you wanna testify, come to the podium. We'll ask you to state your name and address for the record, and then we'll go through that process. But the first order of business should be the oath of office, that Jason uh, Wienerman and I will take. Jason Cron will do that at another time. You want us to read this?
Mr. Chair, you and Jason can read what's on the screen and just insert your name where it indicates.
You, you see it, Jason?
I see it, I'm ready.
Got it, let's go. Three, two, one.
I, Jason Wienerman solemnly swear that I will support
the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Minnesota, and that I will faithfully execute and discharge the duties of the Planning Commission and the County of Stearns, Minnesota. According to law, and to the best of my ability and understanding.
Okay? That takes care of that. Uh, then the first order of business will be the election of officers. Uh, election of officers is gonna be the chairperson, vice chairperson, secretary. Uh, committee members are limited to serving two consecutive years as the chair. So we're gonna open it up with nominations for chair. Uh, if anybody else wants to be chair, I'm certainly not opposed to that. If the commission wants to choose somebody else's chair, Commissioner Persky, yes, what?
I was just gonna say, perhaps we should proceed with the meeting. You chair the meeting and then do this at the end when Mr. Blankish is present. He could want a position or he has an opinion.
Okay, well, that's a good point. Does anybody have a problem with that? At this point, well, it's us that have to decide it, so if nobody's got a problem with that, let's just get through this meeting and the technical things, and then we can address that when he's here and then make sure that everybody's with us, so I guess we can, we'll wait. We'll wait with that then. So we'll go to the first item on the agenda. Which, well, the first item on the agenda is going to be continued to North Fork Distillery in Bruton. Are we going to set a date specific for that?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, I would just table that to a future meeting. We have to send new notice and everything out anyway.
Uh, and we don't make a motion or anything, we just table it? Or do we make a motion to table it?
I think you make a motion to table it.
So item number one is gonna be continued. Uh, we need a motion to continue item number one to not a date certain.
I will move to table item number one to a further date.
I'll second it. Okay. Motion's been made by Ken, seconded by Mike, uh, to table item number one. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, I'm gonna call your name. And if you're for that motion, say aye. If you're opposed, say no. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn? Sean Blackburn?
I don't see him on there anymore.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion passes. We still have a quorum with Jason with us, so we're still in good shape. Okay? Item number two is to consider an interim use permit request submitted by John and Heather Hoffman, Sock Center. Uh, Heidi will give the staff report.
To consider an interim use permit request submitted by John and Heather Hoffman, Sock Center, Minnesota, according to sections four point one eight, six point six two, and nine point nine point six A of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, number four thirty-nine. The request is to operate a vacation home rental in the residential one zoning district. The proposal is located on lots fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven Vogels Shady Point, lying east of Sock Lake, road and west of Sock Lake, in section four, Sock Center Township. So a little background information on this request. Um, this property was granted, um, an interim use permit back in two thousand fifteen for a vacation home rental and has been licensed annually since then. Um, the property was sold to the applicants this last fall, which triggered needing to get a new interim use permit. The department did receive complaints in June of two thousand twenty-one regarding renting out to more than eight people, excessive noise, nuisance dogs, and using an RV on the property. The department did send multiple letters to the owner at that time, and there was no response from him. Um, the applicants purchased the property this fall, have been made aware of the issues, and have been working with the department. Um, this request was tabled from the November, uh, two thousand twenty-one meeting in order for the applicants to correct a shoreline alteration violation that was completed by the previous owner, and that violation has since been corrected, so that's why they're back here tonight. Sock Center Township did enact a moratorium on December twentieth, two thousand twenty-one for vacation home rentals. However, they did exempt applications that were currently in process from that moratorium. The home and property are in compliance with lot coverage and setback requirements. There's no concerns for feedlot setbacks or wetlands. It is within the Shoreland Overlay District of Sock Lake. Um, there the area is primarily residential lakeshore lots. Um, approximately a hundred residential dwellings and one golf course within a half mile of the property. Septic system has been certified. There has been a water test for nitrates and caliform bacteria that meet the state requirements. Occupancy is limited to eight people. There is room, um, for enough parking um, for the eight-person occupancy, for off-street parking. Um, let's see. The property will still need to obtain the lodging license again, um, if the IUP is granted. Suggested conditions for this, the Planning Commission set a date or event upon which the IUP would expire. The applicants have requested five years. Maximum occupancy shall be eight people. The applicant shall obtain a lodging license from Environmental Services prior to renting the home. The licensee shall keep a report detailing the use of the home, recording at a minimum the name, address, phone number, and vehicle license number of all guests, and a copy of the report shall be provided to the department upon request. A flow measurement device shall be installed for the septic system. Flow measurement readings and monitoring of the septic system shall be recorded monthly, and records shall be made available to the department upon request. A ring buoy attached to a three sixteenth inch manila rope or equivalent material not over sixty feet in length is required near the shore as life-saving equipment. And all local zoning requirements must be complied with prior to licensure. And I do have comments for, that were submitted for the public hearing when we get to that point.
Thank you, Heidi. Okay, members, if you visited the site, say yes when I call your name. If you did not, say no. Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn? He's not with us. That could be. Um, Ken Mossman?
I visited in November. I did not go back at this, again now.
Okay. Uh, Mike Perrell?
Yeah.
Uh, Rich Blankish, we'll have to wait and see. Uh, I did visit the site in case something changed. We'll do the, um, application introductions, so just please state your excuse, oh, I'm sorry. How can I forget you, Commissioner Persky? Uh, applicants, introduce yourselves for the record. State your address, please.
I am Heather Hoffman, and this is my husband, John. Our address is three nine zero five seven, County Road one eighty-six, Sock Center, Minnesota, five six three seven eight.
And then John, just say your voice, so we got a voice recognition.
Ah, John Hoffman here.
Got it. Okay. Um, item discussion. Is there anything you wanna add to the staff report?
Uh, yeah, definitely. Um, I just wanted to say that both of us have lived in Sock Center since we were kids. John has owned a successful tree service business for sixteen years now. We also have six rental homes that we already have experience in dealing with customers and tenants. I personally love hospitality and making people comfortable, so we thought this would be great investment property. But we also wanted a place to enjoy ourselves with our friends and our family, so renting it out would help with the offset costs of all of that. And I also know that there has been some issues in the past before we purchased the property, but we're just asking that we can start fresh and prove that we can do this respectfully. We've already planned on implementing new rules like no pets, um, limiting the number of people staying there after our quiet times, um, no instant booking. I want to be able to screen guests as much as possible. I also know that traffic is a big concern as well, and we do plan on stressing to anybody that books to use precaution and drive slowly. We know it's a quiet neighborhood, and we don't want anybody getting hurt or feeling threatened. Uh, we will also plan on getting the necessary information for each person staying, like IDs, license plate numbers, addresses, phone numbers, and we do require a minimum age requirement to book the property. Uh, we also live ten minutes away, doorstep to doorstep, so if anything does come up, we're close. Um, we do have outdoor cameras there, so we can keep an eye on how many cars are coming and going. We've talked to a few of the surrounding neighbors, one across the road and one on the side, and both of them have had zero complaints. Um, and they're willing to keep an eye open if anything comes up and let us know they have our information. Um, like they said earlier too, they, we did table it, and it was all taken care of. Uh, we planted more arborvitae's, hopefully for more privacy in the future for our neighbors and us, and plan on planting more in the spring, as well as also planting some more plants for vegetation like they had asked us to. So I think that's, that's pretty much it, but we know this isn't popular by any means, but we do plan on doing the best that we can.
Okay. Um, and just procedurally, that everybody understands, we're a recommending body, so what the Planning Commission recommends to the county board, the county board takes the vote and the final vote on it, and that board meeting is scheduled for February first, uh, two thousand twenty-two. Um, at this point, we'll open the public hearing. Uh, we'll take the people that are here first, and then we'll check if anybody's on virtually. So if you're here for this item and wanna share comments, please come up to the podium. And if there's more than one person, please come and sit in the front row, that we can keep it rolling, so again, just state your name and address for the record. Uh, the green light on the microphone, you can push way in the bottom. If it's, there you go.
Mr. Chairman and Board, I am Jolene Hoffman, uh, no relation to Heather and John. Our Hoffman has two N's at the end, and we are the adjacent neighbors to the property that's in request for the permit. I recently wrote a letter to your attention and the board, and I'm not sure if you got to read it. You have read it?
We've all got it, and it will be entered into the record as well.
Okay. I would just like to draw your attention to the different issues that I have indicated in the letter. And my husband, Mike, is here. He can kind of elaborate on more of the details if you have questions regarding, uh, the septic system inconsistencies. The shoreline restoration has not been completed. Uh, the work that was done was done by the applicant, and we did not see that he was licensed and bonded to do this work. I don't know if you have any questions regarding issue number one, the shoreline restoration?
Why don't you just go through everything, and the staff's making notes, we'll follow up with the items you bring up.
Okay. We have tried working with the county and notifying them of these different issues, and we have not received any responses. They have disregarded our complaints, and we also are very upset about uh, the termination ordinance that was not, uh, followed through with. There was an allowance made on it by the department. That particular month, that was extended, not extended, but actually just allowed. There was no record anywhere of the request to allow another month of rentals, and there was no record of any action by the department saying that it was allowed. There's nothing in the records. We've also, uh, been made aware of the layout of the home. We knew the previous owner well. He had a bunk room. That's considered the third bedroom in this That's considered the third bedroom in this, uh, rental, uh, request. And it has six beds in it. It had six beds in it, I'm sorry. And, um, it appears that this can be a room for additional beds or additional beyond the eight requested or approved, um, at any time. We've also received information from our neighbors on the other side of our property. They purchased their home in March of last year. It was vacant for almost ten years. They are from the Mankato area, and their thoughts are also of turning that into a vacation rental home. So we would have one on each side of us. We have had more problems since we retired to the lake and to our cabin, because we were not there full-time before. We did not see a lot of the things that were happening now since we have retired there and chosen to make that our retirement home. We want, we assumed we were going to have a peaceful retirement out there. We do not want to have to be monitoring the activity next door to us all the time, but it has been apparent that you cannot control other people. I don't care if you're ten minutes away or two minutes away. Something happens, what can we do about it? We were advised to call the sheriff if anything happened or were endangered at any point. We just are fearful of the people that are coming in there, what they have done in the past. And, um, likewise, the neighbors out there have issued or, uh, given you information on their opposition to it as well. We have contacted by mail twenty-one properties within a quarter mile of us. Uh, we had responses from fourteen that were opposed. We had three that were vacant lots or the properties, uh, homes were vacant. So out of eighteen letters that I mailed out, fourteen of them responded in opposition. And I believe, uh, I don't need to expand on the reasons why they have opposed it. I think it's self-explanatory in all of their emails and the opposition letters. We've been there for over twenty years. We've chosen to, to stay there. We want to move it on to or leave it for our children and our grandchildren, and we can't even let them be outside alone. This is the only home in the Stock Center Township that has had an IUP permit approved or even requested, and that one should never have been approved. It was done deceitfully. The previous owner that received his permit said he was going to do it just to sell his home, but he did it for ten years, five with and five without a permit. So we're, we're not trusting of what goes on next door. And, um, if we have to see that these, um, permits are going to continue, there has to be a lot more restrictions and conditions. And if you approve one, you're going to have to approve them all, because this one was probably the worst. The rest of them are more mom and pop. They're smaller properties. And, uh, I believe that, uh, this is not a place for them in our residential area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, um, comments?
My name is Michael Hoffman. I live at 41049 Stock Lake Road, neighbor to the property that's in question. Here to ask the board members, uh, planning commission to vote no on this. Lived next door to this, uh, type of vacation rental for, uh, the last six years that has been going on. A lot of violations, a lot of problems. As far as contact people being twenty minutes away, ten minutes, this property had person on-site. There were problems that arose, talked to that person, told him to take care of the issues. He said, "All you do and the neighbors do is complain." What am I supposed to do? Hold their hand? No. I told him, I said, "You're in charge. You're supposed to take care. You're supposed to have laws and rules to follow." He said, "No, I ain't going to do it." At the same time, the reason why that property should not have been given a permit is because there was a trailer house on-site. And if there was an onsite inspection before that property was issued a permit, why? That trailer was sitting there until September this year, the twentieth or the twenty-first, finally moved off there. That's because they're moving, selling the property. That's an issue. Other problems we have is a lot of the ordinance and stuff that were designed back in the nineties. That was probably because, uh, computer, uh, mostly was done by mail. The process of a violation, uh, thirty days and thirty days and thirty days, and then the county attorney gets it, gives them another thirty days. With today's technology, everything can pretty much be done with our cell phones and computers matter minutes. I think a lot of those laws have to be changed. The problem with, uh, turning one of these residents that is a home in a residential area, once it's voted on to give them the permit, that residence is now turned into a commercial business. And that's commercial in a residential area. When that happens, we lose our security, we lose our privacy, and the value of our homes, they go down. The, the people that are buying these properties, they pay more than what market value is, which in turn increases, uh, the tax base for everybody else. We get to pay the taxes on that. It doesn't affect them because renters are going to pay their bill. That's a problem. We don't get that back. So, um, the issues that, uh, that are out there, the same ones that everybody else has told you over the years that come up and talk about this, uh, it's not changed, and it won't change. And this is on a dead-end road. That place is a second from the end, and so traffic through that area has to go past every single residence in that area, both in and out, regardless of how many times they come down the road or decide to go to town. Uh, the only thing, the only people that this benefits are the owners, not the community and not the residents out there. So again, I ask for a vote no on this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Persky? Mr. Hoffman, he has a question.
Um, see, I see half the lake or the south half of the lake is in the city of Stock Center. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
And then the, uh, the north half, there's a split here, and then it becomes township. As far as law enforcement, is, are, is it only, uh, emergency calls received, responded to in your part of the lake by the sheriff's department?
That's it.
Okay, so the, the, the police department does not respond to that part of the lake?
No, and I talked to the sheriff today or one of the deputies and asked what happened. He said, "Well, if it becomes a problem," he said, "we could, uh, probably set up, uh, how do you put it? He said, "We could, we could have somebody come out and do an inspection run once or twice a day just to drive through." But I said, "You know, that's a burden on the sheriff's department and taxpayers." I said, uh, before these things came up, I said, "There was no issues or problems out there." The only problems we really ever had was on Fourth of July when somebody fires off fireworks after ten o'clock. Noise ordinance out there is ten o'clock. Okay?
Okay.
Anyone else?
Nope, thank you.
Mr. Chair and members, I am, uh, John Basil. I live at 38171 County Road 29, Stock Center, and I'm just a dairy farmer. I'm chairman of the Board of Supervisors Stock Center Township, and I know sometimes you guys like to hear from the township out there. And, uh, full disclosure, too, we, John has done, uh, past business for the township, and this has nothing to do with his past business or possible future business with the township either. I am strictly here representing the township on this matter, and, and, uh, this is one of them situations where it's always nice to have somebody else on the hot seat instead of the town board. But, but, back when this, uh, vacation home rental started, you know, we really had no opinion on it one way or the other, and we have not heard any, um, bad things happening one way or another until, um, this situation came up, and, uh, now we're hearing it pretty good, which is how it should work. Whatever. And so, um, what we're hearing, most of the neighbors out there are that are, um, within close hollering distance are pretty much opposed to this. We put a moratorium in place, but the lawyer, um, told us not to try and stop something that's already been applied for. So it's going through the process. That would be up to you guys to figure out what to do with it, uh, then. But it's always a tough situation when somebody buys a piece of property with the idea they're going to be able to continue doing what the last owners did with it. But when you have a lot of neighbors out there opposed to it, you'll have to listen to them, too. Part of the moratorium we put on was so we could look at this in the future, to change ordinance and not allow homes. So, um, what you guys do with this, if you, uh, if you put, you know, it's interim use, if you put years on it, if the ordinance is changed, I would assume at that time interim use would be expired, and, uh, I suspect the township would not allow it to continue after that. And I know Mike mentioned the, uh, values out there. When you have a commercial business being purchased in a residential area, it artificially raises the value of the housing, residential housing, because assumably the resi, uh, the hu, commercial property would want to pay more for the property. So this is a residential area. We don't want it to be a commercial district. And if you, if this starts to take off, um, which as a township, I don't think we want to have happen, we want the area to remain residential. I know on the lake shore side, a lot of them are old cabins that have turned in year-round housing over the years, but on the, across the road, um, all the vacant properties are being built up with bigger, fancier houses, uh, and whatnot. So I believe the, uh, people living in that area, you know, have informed you of what they would want done. But when you have somebody come and apply for something, uh, you know, they want something done, too. So you guys got to figure that out. But I sure would suggest listening to the neighbors that have to live out there. And yes, new owners may be able to run it better than what the previous ones did. But if you do go that way, you know, I would surely suggest a fence of some sort and, and noise times, uh, or something out there, because the neighbors shouldn't have to put up with, uh, people coming in on the weekends and partying down and then leaving again, or a new group coming in the following weekend. If we do, uh, enact an ordinance to change the vacation home, they would still be able to rent on a thirty-day or more rental agreement anyhow, because you don't need a permit to do that. So I think I covered, uh, most of the things that, uh, you know, and we as a township, uh, need you to know. Uh, if you have any questions, I could sure answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, yeah, a couple, a couple of questions, staff, and are you, so the moratorium is in effect for twelve months?
Yes.
And over the twelve months, you can do a moratorium, but you're going to have to establish an ordinance?
Yeah, we'll have to study the process, uh, or what's happening out there and, and decide then and make a decision. And we would probably want to do that sooner than later, because, uh, you know, when spring comes, people want to be, uh, either doing this or at least know they can't do it, uh, if they're, you know, wanting to buy more properties out there. And I think that's probably the biggest issue as a township perspective. You know, we don't want a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood turned into a commercial, uh, district.
So as you go through that process, ultimately, you may allow them. You'll probably be more restrictive than the county, or you won't allow them, one of those two. But it's not that you won't allow them at all. You don't know that yet. You'll go through that process.
Yes, that is one of our options to totally eliminate the vacation rental, uh, homes, uh,
Or, or potentially make it more restrictive than the county?
Well, yeah, I think if we make it more restrictive, I think we'd go all the way, because it's, it sounds pretty obvious that, uh, anything that's been done in the past hasn't been, uh, um, taken care of, uh, so to speak, on the enforcement, uh, side of things there. And then, you know, there is Big Stock Resort there, too, that's a commercial, uh, campground there, too, where, uh, whether or not that's full all the time or not, and there is, uh, uh, room for, you know, something like this to happen, exist without being negative impact on a commercial campground, too, uh, or not, whatever, so.
There's only one correction I want to make is, uh, when you said you're just a dairy farmer, you're never just a dairy farmer.
Oh, no.
I did it for thirty-five years.
You always want to be just a dairy farmer.
You can see, I used to be a dairy farmer. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here, one question. So were those comments formally coming from the township?
Yes, that was definitely from the township.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next.
Mr. Chair, uh, we got a mic check. Uh, Jason's mic is okay. Can you get a mic check on Sean?
Sean, can you hear us?
She's back.
Sean, can you hear us? Okay, you might want to work on that.
I've been here, uh, can you hear me now?
Okay, we can hear you. Yep, you're back. Okay, next.
All right.
Somebody for this one? Anybody else? Any bill, uh, anybody else on the Hoffman? Okay, okay, yep, you, we're, I'm going to, we're going to close the public hearing. So if you want to talk, please come up here. We got to keep this moving. I've been lenient as how long and everything, but go ahead.
Hi, my name is Teresa Bransner. I'm, um, my address is 21067 Elgview Circle, Richmond, but the reason I'm going to just quick say a quick blurb is, um, this is another meeting that I'm coming to regarding the vacation home rentals, and this is going to keep happening, because it's like I said at the previous meeting, there, it is an issue, and it's growing out there, and it's, it's coming into residential areas, and people are being affected by it. And what I heard from those people is that there's no communication. The county, we go to the meetings, we come, we express our concerns, and those concerns, it's like the chairman from the, uh, Stock River Township said, it's an enforcement issue. You put these, you, you've got the comprehensive plan, and you, you go through all your points, and you say, "Yep, we're going to approve it," and then you throw it out there. And then we're left with the holes in the bucket. We have to patch the holes, because we're the ones that are living around it. So I would just like to see more action done on it, because this isn't going to stop. There's a lot of residents out there, and now I have another group that we're going to try and connect with, because we're just feeling that we are not being listened to, and it's not going to go away. So, um, I think that the township's getting involved, and I thank you, Chairman Bertram, for the last meeting that you said, "Where are the townships?" And our township members are here, and I want them to know. where are the townships? And our township members are here, and I want them to know that it's great that they're going to work with us, because I think we can maybe come to more agreement before we get to this point, and we can either make it more restrictive, or we can work together on it a little bit better. So I, I hope that pursues from there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just to clarify, I didn't say where are the townships. I said, do the townships know about the process? I asked staff to make sure and talk to the townships. They talked to Munson. Munson instituted a, initiated a moratorium. Sock Center Township now has done it, I think those are the only two, and the same thing with Solar. Township said, no, they could do that. Painsill Township, Avon Township enacted a solar farm moratorium. So the bigger question was, do the townships, are they aware of this, and do they know that they can do the moratoriums to slow it down, and to go, that was my point.
And I think they are becoming aware. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, why don't we read some of the comments? Heidi, now into the record. And again, one last time, if anybody wants to say anything, if you haven't talked, come up while she's reading the letters.
So I'll just go through the summary. You guys have the full letters in your packets that were supplied to you. So I got a letter from Greg and Darla Gilb opposed to the request. They had safety concerns, boat traffic, road traffic, unfair to resort owners, and concerns with lake pollution. Letter from Josh and Stephanie Freeze, also opposed. Previous owner allowed a number of renters and the size of the groups to grow. There was party buses, semi with livestock trailers, increased traffic, guests don't respect the neighborhood, use of foul language and loud music, and decreased property values. Letter from Mitchell Minowski opposed. Property isn't zoned for business, don't know who is next door, decreased property values, loss of sense of community trust and security. A letter from Pete and Michelle Uppas, who are opposed. Increased traffic and speed, loud music, party buses, excess noise, decreased property values, safety in neighborhood due to unknown renters. And then Michael and Jolene Hoffman, who are opposed, who also spoke tonight, indicated Sock Center Township had a moratorium. Major shoreline alteration work without silt fence or erosion control blanket. Septic system records are inconsistent. The third bedroom has several beds, so there's an occupancy concern. Previous IUP was not terminated upon transfer of ownership. And then they included supplemental photos and permits and correspondence with the department.
Okay. Yes.
My name is Dawn Jensen. I live at 19413 Florence Circle in Richmond, and I live not too far from Teresa on the same chain of lakes that she's on. And I think it seems like we've been running around trying to go to all these meetings last minute, and it's not just our lake, or their lake, or somebody else's lake. It's becoming a huge county problem, where it's, we seem to be trying to put out the fire on each one, or trying to, trying to manage each one, or whatever. And we're just looking for more response from the county to get ahead of this problem, because it's, it's getting out of hand. Just going online across the country, I know Teresa has just been astounding at how much research she's done on this. This is going on all over, where everybody, you go on there, and it's horrifying, the problems that are happening. We're just trying to stay ahead of it in the county, and it, for some reason, you know, it's, it seems to be the lake shore properties, you know, where these are residences, they're, you know, as in some of those letters, these are not hotels, but they're being operated as hotels without online, without onsite staff. I'm well familiar with hotels. My husband is an executive director of a hotel company, so he's been in business for 40 years. And the amount of money the, these can make, it is a business, and they're bypassing a lot of expense that hotels have to pay. I mean, they don't even have staff onsite. All the neighbors become staff, you know, and security, and it's, it's getting out of hand. We, these are our neighborhoods. We raise our children there. The school bus stops by there. We shouldn't have to be monitoring these homes for other people. Now, granted, I know that the Sock Lake one, they do live close by, and that's nicer to see, but a lot of these that are coming up are actually being owned by business entities not even in the same state, or investment companies, you know, that type of thing. You know, they make it sound like they're homegrown, but they're not. And it, and all we're asking is that the county really step up and really take a hard look at this. They're commercial businesses in a residential area. Thanks.
Thank you. And just so everyone knows, just so everyone knows, one, two townships have enacted moratoriums. Townships are being empowered. We recommend it to the county board that they, we have a study session on this. We're doing that. We put out a doodle poll sometime in March. I think it is going to be happening. We are going to have a study group with the planning commission, some board members and other staff and others to look into this. So we are hearing you, and we are going to look into it, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, one last time, anybody else here on this one? No other additional items? Nobody else is here? So we'd be ready to close the public hearing. Rich moves to close the public hearing. Thank you for joining us, by the way, and driving in. That wasn't 20 minutes, by the way. I think you may have sped. Yep. And Mike, you seconded, okay? Any discussion on closing the public hearing? If not, when I call your name, say aye. And if you don't support closing the public hearing, then obviously say no. Jason Weiner.
Aye.
Sean Blackburn.
Aye.
Ken Mossman.
Aye.
Mike Perrell.
Aye.
Rich Blankish.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the public hearing is closed. Any additional discussion from the applicants? Do you want to share anything at this point? Okay?
Like I said, we bought it to use it, our family and that, and make a little, you know, money, too, with it to help make the mortgage payment and that. And all these problems that have occurred over the years are from Chad Pedersen, the previous owner. And we're not Chad. We don't want to be Chad. We want to start over and do it right, and get along with the neighbors and have a good time out there. That's what it's there for, you know? So hopefully everybody can kind of see my point of view, too, I guess.
Sure. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Ken.
This is directly at staff. They have a lodging license from Environmental Services, so what does this mean? That's something that's supposed to be looked at every year. Couldn't they pull the lodging license if they're hearing these things? Or what, what does a lodging license encounter? What do they take in?
Mr. Chair, Ken, members of the planning commission, Angie Berg. So the interim use permit is for the use, and all the things that you're hearing tonight, the license, Stearns County just happens to be delegated by Minnesota Department of Health to do health and safety checks on swimming pools, hotels, motels, schools, vacation home rentals, restaurants. That's not usual. And so it just happens that Stearns does both. We do the land use permitting, what you're doing tonight, and then the other part of our department deals with the license. They only deal with health and safety, so they deal with smoke detectors and ingress egress, window size, water quantity, that kind of thing. So they, they don't, their rules for licensing don't get into quiet hours, number of occupants, all the things that we do.
Okay, I was just wondering, it's there. I was wondering to what extent they could do.
Mr. Chair, I got a question for staff.
Sure. Mike.
On the total of, where are we at on total number of vacation rental properties that we have permitted? And, and how many of those have we had complaints on?
Mr. Chair, we have about 20 active right now, and I would say about four or five that we've had complaints on, and most of those have been in the last two months, as I've explained to you in November.
What is the license fee, by the way? Do we know? Just curious.
The annual license fee? I, I'm not sure. I believe it's around a couple hundred dollars every year for that license.
Do you know? Okay, doesn't matter. You can let us know. I'm just curious. Okay, there are no findings, because the issue before us isn't, it's whether or not.
Mr. Chair, this one does have findings.
Well, then I don't have them. I have findings for number three.
It would be, if it's for the interim use findings, that would be the right set. Yes, this is, this is the right one. Use item number three, one.
Use number three?
Yeah.
This one? And then this, is this one for the next one, too? Oh, it says Hoffman, but it says number three. Got it. So there are findings. Okay?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Say, there was a reference to shoreline restoration. Do we know the status of that, or what, where that might be?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, the prior property owners had, had a violation, and so our, the applicants in front of you today decided to delay their last meeting so they could correct it on their own. And that permit was issued, and the property is now in compliance with the shoreline rules. Yes, there's no, there's no outstanding violations.
Okay. Well, let's do the findings. Thank you for, Deb and Heidi, for helping me with that. Number one, is a proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance?
Mr. Chair, Jason Weiner here. I believe it is under sections 4.18, 6.62, and 9.9.6A of the land use and zoning ordinance. Number 439.
Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county?
Mr. Chair, it does comply with the future land use map for the county for concentrated development.
Number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
As the applicants, thanks. As the applicants have stated, they do intend to reduce a lot of the previous uses that the previous owner was doing. So I believe with the reduced usage and the more respectful attitude towards neighbors and adjacent property owners, I do believe it will be compatible with the existing neighborhood.
Based on the testimony in the township, I would say it's not compatible, because it's not residential, it's commercial, and so I would say it's not compatible. Four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, the applicant submitted a letter explaining how they intended to run their business, and what improvements they've been working on.
Mr. Chair, also, if we do recommend approval, there are the seven conditions that will be required to maintain compliance with the ordinance. Jason Weiner, by the way.
Number five, if these issues are pertinent to the matter, we'll state them. Township input, yes, we received that. Federal, state, local permits, it'd be the county license. Environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead protection. Was this one that had some sewer, sewage questions? Nope, that's the other one? Information submitted regarding impact of property values. We received nothing formally, but we heard testimony about that. Public health, safety, or traffic generations. We certainly heard the traffic generation concern. Public service and facilities, including schools, parks, streets, and utilities. The streets and the traffic would be the, the one. Financial assurance required, that's not applicable. And then it says other issues. And I would state, one, Sock Center Township imposed a moratorium on vacation home rentals. Two, many of the issues that brought concern were from the previous owner, and that the new owners are now inheriting. And there was a three, and that escaped me right now. Anybody else? I don't think I, I can't think of it right now. So with the findings being done, again, we're a recommending body, so whatever the recommendation is, it's recommending to the county board. County board will make the final decision at their February 1st county board meeting. If they accept whatever it is that we recommend, there's no public hearing, no public comment. If they don't accept what we recommend, then they would set their own public hearing, and they'd have their own public hearing. So a motion would be in order, one way or the other.
Can we review the recommended actions?
Sure. Heidi can read those. The conditions, recommended actions?
I just, can I just bring on one and then focus on?
Yep.
I'd like to focus on number one. Says the planning commission set a date or event upon the IUP would expire, and the applicant requesting the interim use permit, they're requesting five years. And because of the recent actions by the county board, the last one that they dealt with, and we had submitted that as a three-year probationary period that the person or the individuals would have, and then the county board agreed with that. So I think in, in trying to be consistent, we should go along with three years and not five years, and, and then it'll get reevaluated after three years.
Is that a consensus?
Is that, is that okay?
It's fine with Mike and Ken, they're nodding yes. Jason, Sean?
I'm okay with this.
Okay.
Okay. So again, with that, then a motion would be in order for recommending approval or recommending a denial.
Mr. Chair, Jason Weiner here. I move that we recommend approval to the county board of this interim use permit with a modification of the first condition to represent December 31st of, what would it be, 2024? If my math is right?
December 24, it would be. Right. Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion?
I would second that motion.
Jason Weiner moves to recommend approval to the county board. Ken Mossman seconds that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, when I call your name, say aye. If you're opposed, say no. Jason Weiner?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes no. So a motion of six to one, five to one, the recommendation to the county board is granted. Okay, next item, item number three. We've got, consider a revocation of interim use permit obtained by Jacob Mueller. Heidi will give the staff report. Heidi will give the staff report.
To consider revocation of interim use permit P dash zero one five zero seven eight obtained by Jacob Mueller, Richmond, Minnesota, according to sections four point eight point eight and four point eighteen point eight B of Sterns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance number four thirty-nine due to permit violations of a vacation home rental in the residential one zoning district. The proposal is located on lots one and two, block one, Maryland Beach First Edition in section twenty-six, lying southeast of Elkview Circle and northwest of Horseshoe Lake and Munson Township. So a little background information on this one. This IUP was approved in February of twenty twenty with the conditions listed in your staff report and the findings of fact listed there. The maximum occupancy allowed is four people and that is based on, primarily based on the size of the bedrooms in that home. As we talked about earlier, Munson Township does have a moratorium now on new vacation home rentals since December of twenty twenty-one. Violations that were documented, in May of twenty twenty, the department received a complaint that the property is being rented to more than four people. And the online listing included bunk beds in a third bedroom area that were not allowed. And after contacting the owner, the listing was updated and the bunk beds were removed from, from there. Then in December of twenty twenty-one, we received another complaint regarding cars being parked on the road. And so upon reviewing that complaint and the online listings, the staff discovered that the home was listed as three bedrooms with six beds. And based on several comments and reviews of the home, there had been more than four occupants in the home multiple times. So today, the planning commission has a couple of options. They can make a finding that a violation does exist and recommend the commissioners that the permit be revoked or make a finding that the violation does not exist and recommend that, to the commissioners, that the permit not be revoked. And modify conditions potentially as you see fit. And that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Did the site visit? If you visited the site, say yes when I call your name. If you did not, say no. Jason Wienerman?
No.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
I have been there several times previously, but I did not go this time.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
No.
Commissioner Persky?
Yes.
I visited the site. So we'll do the applicant or the existing holder introduction. For the record, I think you have to scoot over one, don't you?
Does this one work?
That'll be okay, okay?
Jake Mueller, the address of the property is two one zero one nine Elkview Circle, Richmond, Minnesota. I guess to start out, it's, it's a little confusing as to what the violation is in particular and I think it kind of fed from one to the other. It started with, I think December fourth was the violation that there was vehicles parked on the road. And I'll tell you that I've never had a complaint from a neighbor out there directly to me in regards to a noise violation or too many people on the, at the property after dark, anything like that, the cars parking on the road piece of it. It kind of escalated with the county and that's the question as to, you know, why I'm here today with the VBOs out there. I understand both sides, but I really do. I take compassion towards both sides of the, of the argument. But what happened on this particular occasion was that on about two weeks after December fourth, I got a call from, or got an email from the county indicating that there was seven vehicles at the property. And I denied it. I went back to the county and I know for a fact that that weekend in particular, I was working at my other property. The county had addressed that it was at the other property that I have. They gave me the address of the other property. And I was adamant that I was at that property, working on it, and there was not seven cars at that property. We went back and forth on it. Essentially, it was my word against the neighbor's word at that property. We got to the point where even got residents' names next doors. I had the, the county, I don't know if they called the residents next door or not because it was during Thanksgiving, so there was cars parked on the driveway at that particular property, but just not at my place. After some research, they found out that it wasn't the incorrect address. So they apologized and said, it's the other property. And immediately I indicated that, that weekend I was, I, I lent it out to a friend. So it's a, a friend of mine, a friend of my family's from the neighborhood. He's well-known in the, in the community. He was staying at the property. And as soon as I hung up the phone, the, the thought went to my mind that that's almost too hard to be true. So I immediately, when I got back to my computer, I emailed the county and said, hey, being that this was a friend and it wasn't rented, does it, is it subject to IUP requirements? The next letter that I got was that they were revoking my license. So after that, I still didn't have any information in regards to why they were revoking the license. I reached out to the county. The county had said that they, they said that I was illegally renting the property out. I went to management and they finally sent me the, the listings. So what they'd done is they went through a hundred and thirty-nine listings and they found some instances, and they'll probably display them here today, where people had mentioned, let's say for example, that they came there as a couple and they had three children and they had a great time. They stayed there with their mom and dad and their one child, things like that. I'll tell you that, that happened. And as soon as I found out that that happened, I apologized. I didn't realize that that happened. It's not as, I wouldn't say. When you, when you rent out or when you put it on VRBO, we have a max occupancy of four. And if somebody tries to, to rent that property with five people, we did not, we declined them. And that's what I did. I don't know if we want to look at it or if we'll have time to speak after the, the arguments too, but in addition to the comments that the county made, I went through our listings and I found maybe a dozen indication, in times where my wife had declined, people that had said, hey, we want to put five people there. And she said, no. There are specific sentences that state the county limit is four. We're trying to do it right. So we're guilty of having people stay there beyond our, our knowledge. If there was five, I'll admit that. But we're trying to do it as best we can. At net, no time have we allowed more than four occupant maximum, maximum in there. People lie. It happens. So I'm open to suggestions around that. I told the county that too, that I'm, I'm fine with doing additional things to make it so that more than four people don't stay there overnight. I guess I can make some comments after, if there's questions there too, but that's my side of it.
Okay, somebody's here. We'll open up the public hearing. If someone's here or online, we'll start with the people in here first. Please come up, same routine. If you're here, please come up to the front, keep this going, limit your conversations for our time. Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Tom Shear and I live at two one zero two three Elkview Circle, right next to Jacob's property. I am not here for him or against him. I just want it to be fair in, in your ruling. Jacob and Laura have kept the property up and well-maintained since they bought it. They rebuilt, rebuilt it, made it really looking nice. They take care of the yard. They take care of the, the yard, keep it up to date. The leaves are gone when they should be. All the people that, we have never had a complaint of noise after ten o'clock. We have never had any issues with any of the tenants that he's had. Couple of years, two years in a row, two different groups of people have came up with their kids. And they said they can't afford going to Brainerd. You know, they, they came here, they, they fished off the dock, you know, excited to catch catfish. You know, they bring up their canoes and stuff like that. I'm not for Airbnbs and having more. We need some rules and regulations on them. We need the county to do it and have it for the whole county, you know. The townships are doing what they can, but it's all new to everybody. You know, we got to have some restrictions on some of them. I have probably more problems with the weekend homeowners that come up during the summer. There, there's a couple of the, the teardrops in our things that you can't get through on a Memorial Day weekend. You can't get through on the Fourth of July because there's so many cars. And those are in the weekend. People coming from the cities that have the cabins up here. So I haven't had, me and my wife haven't had any issues with Jacob's property. They just take real good care of it. A couple of the neighbors in the neighborhood have also used it because they don't have enough room in their place. There's no hotels close by, you know, closest one is Cold Spring. So, you know, some of the neighbors have used it. Our mother and father-in-law would like to use it, you know. So I know there's problems with Airbnbs. Yes, I do. Do I want any more in the neighborhood? No. Jacob's here, they, they have it and we haven't had no issues. And, you know, I am also going to the township meetings to go against Airbnbs. But there needs to be some regulation set up and some monitoring of them. And there's, you know, if we got rules, I'm sure we can enforce them or follow them. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Teresa Bransner, two one zero six seven Elkview Circle. My husband and I own the property less than a quarter mile south of Jason Mueller's property, or Jacob Mueller's property. When I look at, I mean, we're here, we're here because he supposedly violated his interim use permit, which when I look at the documentation here, it says that, well, for one thing, February twenty twenty, we were, we were involved in a meeting in opposition to this coming into our neighborhood. And we had a petition signed and we had quite a few residents on the circle that were opposed to it. But anyway, here we are now. So now the permit has been in place in May of twenty twenty, which was not very long, February, after he got the permit, there was a violation and I know that the, the occupancy number is four. And I guess the violation, you know, that's the problem. I think some of them come here and they give all kinds of excuses, but it specifically says that once it was reported and they, the staff checked it out on his online thing, he had advertised for six. Three bedrooms, six people. So he blatantly, he knew it was four, but it, there was actually, it was stipulated on his website that it was for six. So that was in May. And in December, the complaint, I don't know if this, my husband and, or I filed the complaint in December and that was, and it all came about because my husband was outside and three cars went speeding past our house. And he was like, wow, what are they doing? They're flying by here. So he hopped in his truck, followed them. And they pulled into the Jacob Mueller vacation home rental. By the time he got there, they were unloading alcohol and, which is fine, people drink alcohol. And he did approach them and he asked them, he said, this is a residential area. You know, could you slow down? And, and they were very good about it. They said, oh, I'm sorry. Yep, you know, we can do that. But later that evening, as we drove around the circle, because our, our, our road is like a big call, the Saka Circle, there were a number of cars already on the road. And I said, well, maybe they're not going to spend the night. Maybe, you know, so we're like, okay, so we went about our business. Early the next morning, we were headed, it was a Sunday morning, I believe, we were headed to Mass and we drove around the circle. And those vehicles were still on the road and there were more of them. So we took pictures, we sent them into Angie and we said, this is proof that they were here yesterday and now they're here again. So they did spend the night and it was well over. In fact, I think we had at one time drove by there, or the, the first time we drove by there, there were guys standing through the windows or whatever, but there was definitely more than four people in occupancy that night. So anyway, there was two violations and I guess I don't know how many times between those dates, between May of twenty twenty and December of twenty-one, he would have violated it because nobody knows unless they report some type of a violation and then the staff goes in and checks. But the fact is, is that he had it recorded on his website in May of twenty twenty. They approached him, he changed it, and then when they went back in December, there it was again. So he blatantly knew that it's for four people and he blatantly went ahead and advertised for more on his website. And I guess permits are approved with conditions, so I think the monitoring is something that's an issue and it's kind of left up to the residents and, and the way it looks is that the only time it really gets monitored is if, if a neighbor files a complaint or whatever. But anyway. So I just feel that, and my husband and some of the other neighbors that we've talked to down there, that since Munson Township is putting a moratorium on our vacation home rentals, until we can get more restrictions in there, because I know that the county did rule on the law application this week that they reduce it to three years, but also that they would fall under the guidelines of the moratorium that Munson Township will put in place. That you follow through and enforce this now because he did violate it twice. And you revoke his permit and he can come back and reapply and then he can be subject to the same, the same restrictions that all the other Airbnbs or vacation rentals will be subject to, based on the moratorium, or based on what Munson Township comes up with. And that's what I and some of the other neighbors that are living in close proximity recommend. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Again, please come forward. Thank you. I was worried.
Carrie Bransner, two one zero six seven Elkview Circle. I'm here on, I don't know Mr. Mueller. I've lived out there forty-three years. He's never introduced us to the neighbors. You ask most of the neighbors there, they know who he is. They don't know who he is. They don't. We had other neighbors that never filed complaints to the girls, filed it to him and we never heard anything about it. He did violate. I don't know what's in the planning commission, what you're going to do beside, if he allowed a permit, but something's got to be done. Deliberately did it to, against the neighborhood and that's section four of your facts finding says, is it complied with the neighbors? He wasn't complying with the neighbors. He wasn't complying with the, the permit. And you only seen some complaints now, it's because the other person is applying for the vacation rental place. The neighborhood is waking up. And, and then we started monitoring him. And part of the monitoring is, he can only have two cars there. He had ten that night. There's many a times, now that I'm going to watch it because I'm taking license plates numbers, now I'll match it up with Angie. I'm going to watch him like a hawk. Because he's violating. He violates the neighborhood. He doesn't care about the neighborhood. He fixed it up, it's awesome. So do all the other neighbors fix their homes up and make them nice around there. We're residential, we're not a business district. True, this is upsetting. This is our sixth meeting. And we're getting a message out. I'm glad that Sock Center is doing it. I appreciate you, Jeff. Last meeting, you gave us some direction and some hope. Same with Richard, you know, you put a process, you stopped a process so we could take a break and really evaluate what's going on. And, and part of your comprehensive plan is vacation rental. Do you have the document what its impact to the economy? Have, that's part of the comprehensive plan and if you're, you know, make your plan, you dot your i's, cross your t's, you should have a, a form right now that should tell you what it is improving or not improving our economy in Sterns Colony. And I don't think you have that. You don't. Because I mean, I've talked to the township. Nobody knows really what's going on. I mean, we got a comprehensive plan. It affects how many people in Sterns County, a lot. So, I mean, if I was, put a plan together or came to you with a business plan, I'm going to have my i's dotted and my t's crossed. And I'm going to be able to cover probably ninety-nine percent of the questions. Right here, we're, we're faced with things you never knew was going to come up. So I, I think the county- So, I, I think the county, you guys should really put a brakes on this, and really visit it, and really figure out what is really what we're trying to accomplish. You know, I know a lot of people use these all over. We got documents all over the United States that are having huge problems with this. Huge problems. So, really, I think, again, I thank you, Jeff. Last time, you gave us some hope in this, and I, I don't approve of him getting his license. Again, he had his chance. Why should he have another chance? He's got another place down there, maybe five years you give him, he proves himself. But really, he doesn't care about the neighborhood. He violated it. He doesn't document who's there. I, I got pictures right now, and I bet he can't document whose license plate was sitting there from last week's. But thanks for listening to me, and I really, you need to look at us as neighbors trying to live in a community and be safe. What do you say here? Safe welfare, and there's three things, and that's what I want to see, because right now, that, it's not safety because of the traffic and that. The welfare, our neighbors can't even walk there, they got to worry about getting run over by people. It's, it's not, because who's, it's not neighborly. And it's not a resident, that, that building he's in is not a resident right now. It's a business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to say anything on this?
John Basil, SOC Center Township, again, 38171, 1029. I just had a question for the staff, if you know this offhand. When these properties get their permit to operate, does that automatically go to our assessor, so they know to tax it at a commercial rate? Or does the township have to get that to our? We don't use the county as our, we have a private assessor, so do you know how that works?
Mr. Chair, John, so, we have a lot of information related to property assessments, and the latest was sent yesterday from Jeff Johnson, our former assessor, now he's the property management director. And to answer your question, the assessors get a list, so they, your, your assessor might not get a, get a list if you have a private assessor, so then it would be incumbent upon you when the township receives a letter, because you're usually copied on our letters, you should give that to your assessor, and then your assessor needs to follow up on it. How property taxes are impacted is basically, what we got out of a long email yesterday from Jeff Johnson, is that property taxes for vacation home rentals are, are basically about the same as a seasonal rec res, so a cabin property. That's the way the current law is written, and so, it's, it's below commercial value, it's above homestead, and it's about the same as a seasonal rec, seasonal rec res, they call it. You're probably familiar with some of those terms, so.
One other comment, me and Missy were talking, our clerk, whatever, and it's hard for the staff, people, to get stuck in the middle of the decisions the planning board makes and what happens out there. And just listening to this conversation with Mr. Mueller there, it sounds like a lot of the policing doesn't get done, because it really can't be done unless the neighbors are doing it out there. So, whatever you do here is your business, whatever, but I was just kind of a comment that it's hard for the staff to get stuck in the middle when a permit is issued, and somebody else doesn't do what's supposed to, told or there's complaints, that how does the staff take care of that issue, too?
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Lee Steckman. I live at 20929 Elkview Circle. I've lived there for 25 years. Tonight is like deja vu for me. I spoke in front of you guys and ladies two years ago, February 20th, 2020. I was opposed to this Airbnb vacation rental, whatever you call it. I was opposed to it then, and what happens? Here we are, talking about it again. And why? Because of the violations that I've heard. Have I specifically seen them? Probably not. I've seen cars in front of this rental, as Teresa spoke, during the day, on both sides of the street. It's, it's a place of business. I heard them say that, you know, or someone say that it's, it's really no different than someone coming up from the cities. Well, it's a lot different, because to me, it's, it is a business. It is a business. They don't own the property, they don't live there. No one's there to watch over it, to regulate it, and we have no option. No option other than to try to regulate it ourself. There is no other way. So, I will continue to do it, and I will do it harder and be more vigilant of what goes on, on his property, if you people are not going to. And obviously, you're not. It doesn't sound like it. Two years ago, I spoke, and basically what happened was, one of you, after I sat down, said, "Well, you know, we're bound to hear this type of comments from the public, but now you're hearing a lot more people than me two years ago." I was there, I had the applicant, or the other people that signed complaints, and no one paid any attention to it. But now you guys better. I really think you should. And I'd like to know why. A couple questions I have, I guess. Two questions. One, would any one of you want one of these vacation properties next to your home? You would?
You have one.
You would?
I have one.
And you have no trouble? Do you have a 16-year-old granddaughter that stays there at, during the day, by herself? How many people have you had next door to you?
Just, just to make sure we don't get back to back, just make your comments, if you don't, I don't want to engage it that way, so.
Well, okay. But it's my point.
Yep, you're making a point.
I'm making a point. I have a granddaughter that's 16. She wants to be, I can't be home all the time, my wife can't be home. This granddaughter wants to have her friends out on the dock. And here you have vacation rentals, you have 16 guys, 12 guys, how many ever he has? Or the next person? And I have to keep my granddaughter in the house. So, maybe you don't have that situation, but I do. I can't walk down the street. It's not safe. Elkview Circle is a dangerous road. I've told you that before. These cars fly by there. I walk my dog, I walk my granddaughter. It's very dangerous. So, I have nothing against him personally. I, I'm very upset. I was upset two years ago. This is a residential area, it's not a business. It's not a business. Uptown Richmond is a business. Up and down 22, where they have vacation, you, you can rent, you, you can rent a vacation property in a resort. You have cozy corners. Why, why is it Elkview Circle? Tell me. Somebody tell me why it has to be Elkview Circle. Most of the people there are retired, just like the lady from SOC Center. I worked myself very hard all my life to own that property where I live. I don't want, I don't want an Airbnb, a vacation rental next to me. I'm going to have two properties on either side of me for sale, probably in the next year. I have to worry about who's going to live there, or whether or not you guys are going to approve another vacation rental. So, how do I stop that? You, you guys who approved his two years ago. It's wrong. And you're going to hear more, just like you're seeing here. It's wrong.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Richard Grave, 21008 Elkview Circle, adjacent to the property. Physically, I've never seen anybody as I've been on the property that have visited or used that property in any way, been negative in any ways. In justification, I hear the comments back here, I felt compelled to come up here. It is not a community vacation retirement home. This is public space, public roads. It's not a walking path. Literally, I've come down that road as slow as I can with my truck, and people sneer at me, they flip me off. I use that property, I own property there. It is a public throughway. Every weekend that I come up there, there are people, people visiting, everywheres, hundreds of cars in that whole horseshoe, not even on holidays, okay? So, it is a pain to get through there, truck, trailer, car, whatever. It seems to me like this is a slippery slope. The way to handle this, go ahead and put no off-street, on-street parking at all. Start towing people. Nobody can have people come up. That's the slope we're going down. So, I don't know what happened over here. Personally, I've never seen anything going on over there, they've always been respectful. I stayed there. I have heard not a peep out of those people. Everybody's been there to visit that place. So, I believe he's got property on the other side, too, with another driveway that they could use and park legally. So, you know, if it's going to be self-policing, you know, maybe we should put a moratorium. Nobody can park on the street. End of story. Now, everybody in the community is now affected, not just one person. Maybe the, maybe you guys should visit that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Somebody said the township was here. Is the township going to say something, or? Got it. Thanks for being here. Why don't you read the comments, Heidi?
Yep. I received just one letter, so I'll just read that. Commissioners, we own a cabin, two properties south of the subject property, and are writing in support of Jacob Mueller regarding this matter, and that his permit to operate a short-term rental should be continued. Our experience with the property as it has been operated as a short-term rental are only positive. We are not in support of any other short-term rentals or other non-conforming uses of properties in the area, but the way the Muellers have operated and managed this property causes us, cause us no concerns. Sincerely, Jim and Maureen Atkinson.
Okay, that's the only written?
Yeah.
Is there anybody online by chance? Was there anybody online? Nope, nobody's online? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing pretty quick, so one last time, anybody here? You'll, you'll, let's do the public hearing, and then you can talk. Yep, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Judy Walker. I live at 21035 Elkview Circle in Richmond. I'm just a couple houses down from the rental here. And there are vehicles parked on the road. There really hasn't been a lot of loud parties, but it is a continual rotation of people, lot more traffic, and so forth. Couple of the complaints I have is, we have swings that hang from our tree. We've had renters come and just use our swings, just because it was something to do. We have a lot across the road. They cross through our lot because they're tired of walking around the circle. So, a lot of it is just an invasion of privacy. There's no monitoring. He's had violations. Let's just put a stop to it for a while, until we can get some, some ordinance in place that we can monitor, someone to call, instead of having to call the Sterns County Sheriff.
Okay. Thank you. There's nobody else, then probably a motion would be in order to close the public hearing, and then we'll hear from Mr. Mueller.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motions are made by Rich, close the public hearing. They're second.
I'll second it.
Ken seconds it. Any discussion? See, none. If you're in favor of opposing the public hearing, say aye when I call your name. If you're opposed, say no. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blenkish?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, public hearing is closed. Okay, Mr. Mueller, you want to wrap up?
Yeah, I think that's hard to hear for anybody. What shines through, and I'll tell you that, I'm not the type of person that would ask those to come and speak on my behalf, because it's not their problem, so it means a lot. Thank you for those that said some nice things, and for those that were negative, I totally understand it, I really do. I get it. What's really hard to hear is that I don't care about other people, I don't care about my community, whether it's at work, church with my family, or at home, it, it's my community. And that cabin, I think a lot of times, it's, it's saw as that it's just an investment for me, that's my community. I have young kids that walk out there as well, 12, 10, 9. I've never, ever been rude, I've always been kind to everybody that's out there, and I would be glad to shake anyone's hand. I don't take it personally, so let's just go with that for now. I, I feel like there's, there's the, the need to address the claim that there, I broke or violated the four maximum. That's simply not true. The, ever since it was inducted or that it was approved, I've never had it over a max of four, been able to rent it, never. That's, and, and what we really need to look into, and I, and I found this out after this violation was made, too, is that on VRBO, my wife looked into it, and it does say that there's three beds, or six beds, three, two baths. I mean, how it works is when you fill out a VRBO, you put in, you enter in the criteria of the property, so we have two king-size beds and two pull-up beds. We didn't put on there that we have three bedrooms or four bedrooms. VRBO looks at it, and they say that you have six beds, because they apparently take the kings as two. We changed that, and that's fine, I have no problem changing that, I have no reason to not change that. Had that been addressed with me prior, I would have changed that prior, but again, we did not, and never have had that max occupancy over four. So, if that's a miscommunication, I apologize. Obviously, updated. The seven cars in the driveway, I don't mean to, I don't need to go into specifics, but I'm telling you that we've had this for a long time, and I get that, that that was frustrating for the neighbors, that there were seven cars out there. That's my fault. I didn't rent it that night, I rented it to a friend. The specifics of it, he had three people there the first night, the second night, they went to a hockey game, I called them afterwards, I asked them what happened, he said that there were some people there, they came back. I wasn't checking the cameras, I have cameras out there. More times than not, I have guessed they have three cars out there, I tell them to move them. If they have four cars out there, I say, "You can't be there." I didn't check them that night, when the county told me that they were there, and we had the miscommunication between the addresses, I immediately called them, and I was surprised, I was disappointed. I'm not mad at them, it happened, but there was cars parked on the road. So, I'm guilty of that. I can understand now, knowing that there was pictures submitted to the county when I was opposing it, and it was the wrong address, how that was frustrating for the county, too. So, that miscommunication was frustrating for everybody, I think, because it was an incorrect address. And then, in regards to filing a complaint to me, that never happened. If one of the neighbors had said that they filed a complaint, and I did nothing about it, either they said it to one of my kids or somebody else, but if, if, if there is a complaint, I would totally, totally tell you to reach out to me. As far as like swinging on your swings, that mortifies me. Call me about that. Everybody's got my cell phone number.
Just keep, yep, just keep going.
Everybody's got my number. And I'll leave. Everybody's, yeah. Yeah, and then cars on the both sides of the street, you know? So again, we try to do the best we can as far as keeping cars out the street. There are cars out there a lot. I think that the street is used for parking in many, many areas other than mine. But again, I'm not disrespecting the neighborhood. I'm not purposely violating. I'm not trying to be sneaky. I'm not, I'm trying to run it and abide by the rules of the county. And I'm here.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing's closed. I think we got what we need. John made a good point about staff getting in the middle. Don't think, I'd much rather be at home tonight, sitting with my wife and two sons than being here. This isn't fun. And then you've got other issues that you don't even know about that float around here, so it's not, it's not fun. The best I've always been, I've served in several elected offices. The best police was talking to each other and working it out on your level that it didn't get to a place like this because I never saw too many great decisions made in front of public bodies, including ours and others. The best thing to do is, you know, talk across the fence line. Growing up on the farm, they always said a good fence makes a good neighbor. You knew where the line was. That's where you plowed. Growing up my entire life, there wasn't a time that we came to the end of the field that we didn't stop to talk to the neighbor. That doesn't happen anymore today, in the field or anyplace else. So that creates a lot of our problems, and then it gets thrown in our lap, and then we make a recommendation to their lap. Nobody, in the end of the day, nobody feels good about it, but that's why we sign up for this. So it's tough. I mean, when, like, in situations like this, I was on the planning commission in the city in Paintsville before I was on the council, and when somebody would come and say we wanna do something, I'd say, did you talk to the neighbors? And many times they would say, well, we don't have to because it's within the guidelines and we're that many feet up. I said, you may not have to, but it might be wise to do that because then when you start building what you're building, and the neighbors start asking questions, they're gonna make up something. If you tell them what you're gonna do, they're gonna be less. And I've always said that. I've said that here. Talk to the neighbors, talk to people, and then we won't get here, but that's me on my soapbox. So there's no findings. This is strictly a straight-up recommend reneging the permit or continuing it. Any discussion from planning commission members?
I just have a comment to make.
Okay.
I kinda feel like they're held to a higher standard, you know? Some of the people that would like to enjoy these vacation rental properties, they're people that they can't afford a lake home, and they have a family, and they'd like to have that experience. And they'd rather not go to a resort or whatever. This is more of a personal experience. And ninety-nine percent of them, I think, are probably a better neighbor than some of the neighbors that own those lake properties from the city. You know, they have rules and stuff they have to abide by. And I live on a road on the lake. And if you wanna talk about people parking on the roads and loud party and stuff, and a lot of the neighbors that come up from the lake, they don't have any rules. They follow, do whatever they want. Here, there are repercussions and rules to follow, and that's why it's here. And I think everybody should have a chance to, if you own something, you should be able to, if you follow the rules, be able to enjoy it.
Okay, any other comments?
I got a comment in regards to, this is an IUP, which is basically a contract between the county and you, the property owner. And within ninety days, according to what we have in our documents here, you failed to keep that contract, and then again, in December of 2021. So my question for my fellow commissioners are, how do you feel about the contract with the county not being honored?
Fair question.
Fair question, no answer?
No.
Okay.
Anybody else? Otherwise, a motion would be in order, recommend to the county board at their February first meeting. Again, if they accept our recommendation, that's it. If they don't, they probably do their own public hearing, I'm guessing. So motions in order.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Sean.
I wanted to mention the recommended action. The first thing that we are supposed to do, apparently, maybe we forgot, was to decide whether or not the violation exists. If we say there's a violation, then we just don't need to go any further. It's just a violation, and we revoke the permit, and that's that. And I was kind of under the impression that maybe we had to vote on that first before we went to whether or not we're recommending approval or denial. Am I correct?
That's a good point. I always take my lead from staff, so let's have Angie and Heidi weigh in on that.
Mr. Chair, I believe you'd be making the motion on whether or not you believe the violation exists and whether or not if you, the motion is to not revoke, if there's any alterations to the conditions to help prevent any future violations would be an option. So it's, I don't think you need to, yeah. Basically, you're deciding if a violation exists or not, and then does that warrant revocation? Or are there modifications to the conditions that can be made?
So basically, I mean, obviously, if you think violations occurred, the motion probably would be to recommend revoking the IUP. It's one of the same kinda. Part of what makes me feel more comfortable is putting a pause on this is because now the townships have been engaged. Again, it's happening closer to home. It's gonna happen within the township. And they are, again, we don't know that they're not gonna say no vacation home rentals. They're gonna do a reset. We're gonna do a reset, the way it sounds. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having the meeting that's coming up in March. And so then, once that happens, then potentially vacation home rentals will be allowed under a different set of guidelines. So if this would be absolutely no, never again, I'd have a little bit more of a problem with it, but this is more of a reset. And for me, again, it's not easy for us. But the question, Sean, help me, is there violations? The answer to me is yes, there were. For whatever reason, there were. So, but we need a motion. I'm the chair. I'm not gonna make a motion. That's why we all get paid the same for the meetings. So somebody make the motion, and we'll see where it goes. Okay, maybe I will make the motion, I guess. I'm gonna recommend that we revoke the interim use permit. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion made by me, second by Rich, recommending to the county board that we revoke the IUP. Any discussion on that motion? Not? Then let's do the roll. If you're for the motion, say aye. If you're against the motion, say no. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Six to one, recommendation to the county board is to revoke the interim? I'm sorry. Six to zero. I never was good at math. Okay? Should we finish the minutes and everything, and then do the election? Is that okay with everybody? Okay? So the next order would be the minutes of December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Only recommendation I'd have is the planning commission member, Jason Krown, was excused. We didn't hear from the other Jason, but we'll just give him the benefit of the doubt. We'll call him excused, too. But, so I would just say excused, because Jason did let us know ahead of time. And the same thing for tonight. Let's make sure that it's excused, because he did let us know.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Jason Wienerman did also let us know prior to the last meeting. I wasn't at the last meeting to make that announcement, so obviously that didn't get across to you. But he was also excused.
We were all concerned, and we sent out the deputies, and then we found out he was okay, so that's good. Okay, so anyway, they both are excused, so can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Mike moves, approve the minutes. Ken seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye when I call your name. Jason Wienerman?
Atstain.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so minutes are approved. Okay? And then we have other discussion. Couple things. Board meeting update. Oh, the December, we never got a bizarre December board meeting update. I guess I'm not sure if it's important or not at this point. We did get an update the last board meeting. Joe, you wanna talk a little bit about the one vacation home that was approved? You wanna just briefly?
Well, we heard testimony. Some of that was, again, from the same folks that were here tonight. And that was with the Glau property. And again, torn between letting, you know, approving it or not approving it. Because he had applied prior to the moratorium that, okay? Because he had applied prior to the moratorium that the township had put on, I mean, there was a question, you know, should he have to play by those rules? Because he had, you know, had gone prior to that. And then we also talked about, you know, the number of years that a person could apply it to. There was discussion about that. So it was kind of a compromise that we were gonna go ahead and approve it for three years, and he's gonna be held to three years. With that being said, and we've got that meeting coming up, you know, that's maybe something that we look at, is give these folks a probationary period, all of them, when they come in, and make it a few years so they can prove themselves that it's okay. But again, we hear about these people buying these up and making these vacation rentals almost like a hotel room. And that's changing the complexity or the complexion of our lake shores. Because now it's becoming commercial opposed to, again, the residence and almost like hotels rooms in your neighborhood. And is that what we wanna see? Also with the property tax, you know, there's those people that rent it out a few times a year, and maybe it supplements their income. But those that actually, you know, are booking it commercially on the, you know, VRBOs, the ones that are out there on Facebook soliciting to have it, you know, booked twenty-four-seven on three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, that's different than the families are. So yeah, I think we really do need to sit down and take a look at where we're going with this because it's changing the complexion of resorts and time on the lake. So I think you guys can respond to that as well.
I think, Joe, some of us are too old. We didn't realize that this was, we thought the owners were gonna take it and rent it out to people. And that's where, I never gave a thought that this was gonna be an Airbnb thing that was gonna be all over the world and next week. But there is one thing that I've heard tonight that I don't wanna hear again. They're blaming us. We're a recommending body. It's you guys' fault. We just recommended it, but we got all the blame tonight. They were up here pointing fingers all across here.
Right, right. And again, it's then, again, something we need to take a look at. We got two townships that put moratoriums on, so.
I just ran across an article, I think I shared it with Joe here. A county in Oregon was having some serious problems with the rental system. And what they were finding out was their landfills were filling quicker, for one. So there was the refuse issue. And then because of it being in coastal area of Oregon, there was a lot of people renting. So then they had the increased traffic and that kinda stuff. And so now their infrastructure is too small to handle the amount of traffic. So, and they've been into it a much longer time than we have. So for us to slow down a little bit and have the townships involved so that they can say, hey, this is what we want our township to be like, give them that time, I think that's prudent on our side to do that, but.
Big thing we're gonna have to watch, like the one gentleman said, and I think he's hit the nail right on the head. He has more problems from the weekend people that come up than he does from the rental people because who monitors those people? They own the property. They do whatever they want. If they want ten cars to be there, they have ten cars there.
Somehow, by granting these IUPs and what have you, that property owner has made a contract with the citizens of the county, and they need to, the property owner, needs to monitor what's going on in their property. People are saying, we don't have a number to call. We can't call the sheriff.
The first few we did way back, I remember when we did one in Clearwater Lake. I don't know if you were even here. We were making the property owner take care of all this stuff. Put some numbers down, numbers for people to reach, and all of once, this stuff all kinda went away.
And I'm thinking maybe with townships being more involved in this, that maybe those township supervisors should be the go-to people. If there's an issue, go to them first. And then if it's infraction of a township ordinance or whatever it might be, then maybe the township supervisor calls the sheriff and say, hey, we got a problem out here.
My next thinking was, this is a bad time of year to bring things up to township people. Two months before an election?
Yeah. What I see in my neighborhood, because I live from the Hoffman property. I live four tenths of a mile away. I'm on the same road as they are. And there's a division there, and they spoke a little bit of it. We have the old people that lived on the lakeside, and it's mostly older cabins, older people retired. And some of them have built it into the full-time. But the other side of the street, the non-lakeside, is being built up with year-round houses and the younger generation. And they are the party central. In the summertime, it is party central out there. And it was unfair of them to pick out this property where it happened, purchased as the cause of all the traffic and all the trouble. It's part of, there's like five or six properties out there on that dead-end road that are owned by young families, and it's party central. And a lot of those trailers and party buses they're talking about, that's not this vacation home.
And what I felt sorry for Hoffman's was ninety percent of the issues were the previous.
The previous, you know, he's paid for the sins of somebody else, you know?
Right, and but that's what happens sometimes. But they definitely got caught into that. But there certainly, again, gets back to Sean's question, were there violations? I think it's pretty apparent. And I do believe, even in town, if you're not parked right, or if there's too many cars, or if you're not parked far enough to the side, a cop will stop. And they'll tell you. And if it's loud, there's a couple of neighbors in our neighborhood that once in a while, you know, it's a little louder than what it should be or whatever, they'll stop. So that does kinda please itself, and of course, a lot of these are township roads. I don't know, Melrose, Paintsville's got two of them on Cronus. You know, of course, these are only gonna probably hap, but they could happen anyplace. They don't have to happen on a lake. They could happen on a farmstead. But obviously, that would be less of an issue because you'd be more secluded. But Melrose, I'll have to get that sheet again and look. But, you know, obviously, like Angie said, two months, boom. I mean, and of course, now these people are motivated, and they're. I mean, and of course, now these people are motivated and they're they're gonna definitely fan the flame.
Mr. Chair, and and another consequence we're seeing of this, and we've already seen it where individuals are buying more than one of these properties. And 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 we can also see, uh, as a business venture, i- if you can fi- find a property and pay more than market value, just so that you can acquire that property, fix it up and make it a, uh, income property, vacation home rental where you've got weekly income, uh, by advertising it on the, uh, on the internet, that's going to inflate the price of all those other homeowners that are there on the lake and, yeah.
And we all would agree on this. I think you show me somebody that's buying these properties and doing these on a five, six cabin, that's gonna be more of a problem than someone buying a cabin and then renting it out for four weeks to help pay something.
Agree.
No doubt about it. And again, I would never rent out our place to anybody. Well, maybe some people, if I know who they were, uh, if they left something behind. But, uh, you you don't, you don't trust, you wouldn't know what would happen to the cabin. If I'd have to remove the toilet paper and the whiskey, then I'm not renting to anybody.
It's the art of the soft deal.
Yep. So and and so that, but this is definitely going someplace.
If I can feed into, uh, the 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 comment just made, one of the things I've noticed about these home vacation rentals is people tend to look at the worst case scenario. If we were to treat any other IUP the way we're talking about, um, these vacation rentals, nothing would go in this county. Um, I mean, we've approved a lot of things. And I don't hear somebody saying, well, you know, there's some, there's some really bad livestock producers in the county, so we can't have any more feedlots.
Mr. Chair.
Or it's it's just, it's kind of a frustrating thing to have people judge people on the worst behavior as opposed to.
You're right, Jason.
Yep, you're you're right. However, I remember a feedlot that we revoked, uh, over in, um, by, um, Luxembourg Township, I think it was, um, Saint Nicholas. Uh, he had a manure spill years ago. I can't remember the name of the farm, but it was right beside Landwear. Where in Landwear, you could eat off the the floor of the milkhouse if you wanted to. And right across, and I think they were even related, they had a massive liquid manure. So, okay, well, you, we didn't penalize Landwear, but we did penalize the other west something it was. So that does happen, I think, and you're you're right. And there's there's bad players and good players. So we don't do them across the board, I don't think. But we, when when you sand pits, I always bring that up. I I don't know that we've ever had more than one person come in in a sand pit, anything on the other side of Richmond. But, boy, we get them by Rockville, we got two hundred people in the room. So, and we permit the lot, sand pits in Western Searns County, left and right, no issues. And the ones there, we either recommend an aisle or we put a bunch of restrictions on them. So we do vary based on, one, the surroundings, and two, from the public. Nobody comes here. Right now, if we'd be on the agenda item and fishing or not is the only one year, we're not get get too excited about anything. But if there's fifty people here, well, our task is to listen to the public and try to make the best thing we can do.
He's been really quiet back there as.
Jason, your your point is is well taken again, say, but you've got backlight there on on the camera. You you look like you're in witness protection. So, so we could see your face if you had a front light. But I, but I, and something that Ken had mentioned earlier, too. And 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 that's to be said about these vacation home rentals. As as we've seen so many, uh, resorts disappear just because of the age of the cabin and they sell out to people that want to build. And and that is that there are a lot of families that want a piece of the good life in Minnesota and come to a week on at the at the lake. And 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 these people do come to these vacation home rentals. They they come there to relax, they enjoy it with their family, and it's and it's a great opportunity for them. And I'd I'd hate to see us lose out on that.
That was my, that was my point. You, you, somebody can't afford a.
Yeah, it was you, Mike, yeah.
But they want, they want the experience. They don't want to go to a resort where it's just teeming with people. And it's more of a personal thing. You sit around the the fire and watch the kids on the dock and.
I think I've said it at every other meeting, it was my turn to shut up tonight.
Oh. Boy, you're lucky I broke it up.
Okay, I'm gonna chime in now.
Go for it, Sean.
I got, I gotta say, well, I, you know, I went to that point where we had to make that discussion about revocation or not. But the 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 truth of the matter was up to that point, um, you know, I'm, w- we decided that this was going to be okay to do this. We and we've been changing the rules as we've been going along. But all of the complaints, um, a- as it was mentioned, is basically the worst-case scenario. And there, and and it it was sad that there were violations, but I wasn't, it wasn't, I I was not swayed by the arguments because because of the fact that that we've already agreed that it was, uh, something that we wanted to allow and to be able to offer to people. And 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 so I I, it was, it was a an awful lot of air about stuff that was not pertinent to the actual decision.
Okay?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just to clarify, Angie Berg, again, so we are not having a meeting in in March. I did send you all an email later this afternoon or mid-afternoon. I misunderstood the board's discussion at the meeting. I heard.
You should have corrected me, Angie.
Well, I am now.
Now they're waiting for a meeting.
I I, believe me, I I'm in touch with a lot of those people, so I'll let them all know.
Tell them I made a mistake. I didn't get an email.
Did I not send one?
Elk Road should get rebuilt there because that is a bad road to drive around.
Anyway.
I get the point.
That Elk Circle? Oh, my goodness, yeah.
There's not gonna be a meeting.
One thirty-six, you should have gotten one from me. Okay.
That you, that it wasn't going to be?
Maybe I sent it to myself because I had BCC'd you all.
Bless.
That could be what happened.
Jason got them all in another country.
He did.
I bet you.
Well, I will send you the email that I likely sent to just myself earlier today. But we are not having a meeting for vacation home rentals with the county board and the planning commission. Uh, the planning commission will talk about vacation home rentals at your next meeting because you only have two items. So between now and then, we have a list of lots of things that we've heard in potential mitigating ordinance changes or conditions. But we want to hear from you all. So if you have ideas that, you know, send them to me. And we're not gonna ask you to vote on anything at your next meeting. And I know Jeff said you're gonna be gone, so.
Well, I might participate.
Oh, virtually. That's right. So so give me ideas between now and then, and we'll just create the list and have some dialogue.
Uh, first thing you do is, uh, find out what other counties are doing, like around us. And you always do that so well.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be a good, what's Canoei County doing, Benton County, Sherburne County? And then some of the Lakes County. I mean, obviously, in Brainerd, this must be a big thing. And if they've got a hundred of them, what's happening there?
I don't think so. There there probably is.
I I use them up in Brainerd. That's where my grandson lives in Weekend Ford Lake Place. That's what we use, and we do a different one every time.
So they.
Try a different lake.
And so find out what what other counties are doing about it. And is this, I can't believe that this would just be happening here. You know, what's happening, I guess. So this discussion might be a segue into the next month meeting. And you're getting some feedback from everybody, so.
I think we should meet at a vacation rental. Yeah.
My daughter goes up, they go, they go up like they do, they go up for business once or twice a year up to the Brainerd area and rent a a rental and stay up there.
We all got, you'll get that information to us sooner than later.
You're in the audience, you get, you saw what we put up with today, and it's been that way.
Do we want them on microphone or does that matter?
Yes, yes, please, thank you.
Deb's gonna come running in that room in two seconds, so I thought I'd.
Name and address, please.
You know, my family has used a couple of these, too. And last year, we were up by Brainerd. And, you know, it it goes back to that same predicament. You know, you can't necessarily, if everybody can afford to buy a lake place. So, you know, like us, too, I grant that I, my farm is right next to a lake. But, uh, you know, it's just a chance for people to get away and enjoy lake life that, you know, otherwise don't have a way to do it. But, you know, there's two ways to look at this. So, yeah, you can, we we can come up with something to to regulate VRBOs, get rid of VRBOs. But how much of this rental has been going on for decades?
Under the hat.
Already?
Yeah.
You know, that's been done privately. I mean, unfortunately, unfortunately, it's probably been the better way to go because it's obviously caused less issues because nobody's heard about it. You know, when you put it in VRBO, well, now it's, the internet's worldwide. You know, anybody can have access to these properties. And unfortunately, like everything else, it's probably the ten percent that's ruining it for everybody else.
One thing I I talked to Jason Crohn, he mentioned about a family coming up from from the south. And you just imagine that. How many people from southern part of the country have have heard about ice fishing, have heard about driving on a lake in the wintertime? But would, gosh, for one time, they want to come up here and do that, want to experience. And sure, a few people have have now done that. And again, this provides that opportunity which they may not ever necessarily have.
And if they do do it in winter, Joe, the chances that there's problems are pretty slim, probably, because, you know, they're in the fish house or in their cabin, they're not outside, it's not the loud noise. It's not the, the parking's always gonna be an issue. And again, that should be self-policing for any homeowner or or, uh, we had a neighbor that passed away. I bought the house in nineteen eighty-five. I've had thirty neighbors. She was the thirtieth neighbor that I've lived through since nineteen eighty-five. Most of them moved, well, no, most of them died. Uh, a handful of them moved to another place, but they became elderly, it's more of a senior. But we never had an issue, but we were lucky. But I'll tell you, now the neighbor that moved in across the street, we're over there right away. We tell them who we are. We mow our lawn Mondays and Fridays, we water our lawn. Everybody in that street, except for two, have sprinkler systems. Everybody mows their lawn. You know, one dad was a a badge of honor, he was the first one in the field. But when he was in the field, Ray Welly was in the field, and my uncle was in the field. You know, one of them drove the other one to raise the expectation. So, again, those things can work. But I always said, every time a new neighbor sells, one bad neighbor can change the whole neighborhood, uh, at the lake or anyplace. You know, it's one, and you can't police all that. But if there are issues, if they are gonna be loud, or we gotta have, I think we deserve, and that's our oath, is to, you know, health, safety, and.
Yeah, we're almost running into the same situation we did with the RVs. Is that if people were respecting each other, it would never have come to a head like it did. And it did, and now we've got the same thing here.
So we'll continue that discussion. Uh, we all got the, um, summary of twenty twenty-two that Heidi shared with us. All the things that we've done, Barry telling, review that, read that. Uh, anything on Clearwater Forest that we need to know about? You'll kind of be monitoring that, I assume, right?
Yeah, I have a couple of things when you're done.
And then Milk and Honey, any update on that? There was a meeting coming up, or isn't that?
Uh, I think the township is working with Milk and Honey and with some of the complaints from the neighbors there. Uh, I've gotten, again, a few calls about people.
But there's been no meeting yet. Oh, there is, okay, that's one of the things. I think that's all, oh, I should say two things before I forget. The last county board meeting of the year, I think it was the last one, there was a comment made by commissioner that no woman ever served on the planning commission. I recommended to staff that the county board should correct that. I don't know if you did or didn't. Do you know or you remember? But just for the record, because it kind of implies it's a negativity that's not true. Uh, Rose Arnold, who was the chair of the county board, served on the planning commission back in the day. Bonnie Mossman did, Carol Gates, uh, Johnson.
Marley, Marle Stansky was on. And when Marle Stansky and my wife, when they went on, they replaced two women. Because that was the time when, uh, Lee said he had to replace two women, so he got two new women to replace them.
There have been women and who they all are or whatever, but the point, and I want, do want this on the record, there have been women that have been appointed and served on the planning commission, as I hope there will be in the future. But just a correction on that. And then, uh, uh, we've got two birthdays, Kansas tomorrow, and Jason Crohn's is on Saturday. So say happy birthday to him when you get a chance. That doesn't count. Tuesday. Go ahead, Angie.
Uh, real quick, Mr. Chair, so Deb looked up the fee for the vacation home rental lodging license that was asked. It's two hundred and ninety-dollar base fee annually and then seven dollars per bedroom. So three bedrooms, four, so a little over three hundred bucks.
And do we do an inspection on those?
Annual inspections are done for the food, beverage and lodging side, yes.
And that's, I just didn't know wh- to what degree they could, if they could shut a place down. So the only way they can shut it down is if there's a problem with the water or the septic system or whatever.
And if they wouldn't renew the license, then it would be shut down, right?
Right.
Yep. I did ask for the flow information, water flow and the reports, uh, that these two properties had. Uh, and staff reminded me that they don't ask for them unless there's a complaint, which that's good. So now there's been complaints. I couldn't really tell anything off of that. I thought maybe the water flow or the, um, the logging would show something. I really didn't see anything that would, uh, show that, but.
That's, that's another thing that I thought was an automatic deal at the end of the year, they were supposed to turn in.
They have to keep them, but they only based on, and I didn't know that, but the staff said it. They have to keep the information, but they only have to submit it if there's a complaint.
See, I talked to a guy from Fiddler, and he said they were keeping it for some, and they were automatically sending it into the county for some things.
Yes, Joe.
Angie, then if with those annual inspections, there, it, I would hope that there's, uh, uh, smoke detectors in all the rooms and then also CO2. Okay, are that's all in there? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the only last thing, because I heard you a few moments ago, say I can correct you if you in, if you misstate something.
Yep, please.
Avon Township never had a moratorium on solar.
Okay.
Um, and I thought I sent a, an email from Steve Seltzer, clerk, with straining all that out. Um, they they did change their ordinance, and now they hear. Thank you, Heidi. They hear the IUP for solar, and then we issue the construction site permit. So just quick update.
So, uh, they're not relying on the county approval, they're approving it. Got it, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, and then now, uh, let's do the election of officers that we would have done earlier, but.
Yeah, before those two guys up there fall asleep or something.
They're with us. So, uh, um, straight off, I'll say if, uh, the commission wants another chair, I'm not gonna be hurt feelings reporter or nothing. So you guys do what you want to do. It's a the planning commission discussion, so whatever you want to do. And I asked staff, should I do this or should somebody else? And they said I should do it, so that's what I'm doing. So for chair, uh, there's a nomination for chair. Any nominations?
I would like to nominate Jeff based on that he he runs a good meeting, well organized, and I appreciate the leadership.
I'd like to second it.
Okay, motions been made and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? I think legally you have to do it three times. And again, uh, whatever the members want. Are there any other nominations? You can self-nominate your two if you want to. Uh, and then the questionnaire is the nomination of the position. Uh, do they accept? Obviously, I would accept, again, whatever the will of the commission is. And then you need a motion, uh, well, I suppose, no other, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, then we close nominations? If I'm not doing this right, somebody say something.
Do we have to have a motion to close nominations?
Uh, I don't know. Do we need a motion to close? No. So I'll close nominations, but there does need to be a motion to, and a second and a vote to, um, approve the nomination. So the motion's been made and seconded. Uh, no discussion, then we'll do a roll call. Um, I'm doing this by memory now. Um, Sean Blackburn.
Aye.
Jason Wienerman.
Aye.
Ken Mossman.
Aye.
Mike Perrell.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll abstain. Commission Vice Chair, any nominations for Commission Vice Chair?
Should we nominate Jason Crohn because he didn't want to come? When you're not here, you get nominated, right?
I did ask Jason if he wasn't by chance elected chair. Uh, would he, and I think Joe had a conversation with, would he continue as vice chair? Asked him, and he said he would, but whatever, again, we decide.
He has been vice chair, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And he's been, you know, he's been missing a couple of meetings, and he feels bad about that. But he said I certainly will be there and whatever. But again, I guess we're jumping ahead. Would he accept? I wanted to make sure he would even accept it, and he said he would. But again, he was saying, said the same thing I did, whatever you guys want.
I'll nominate Jason Crohn.
Okay.
Uh, second by Jason Wienerman.
Okay. So, uh. Okay, so any other nominations? Jason Cron's been nominated for Vice Chair. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close nominations. I answered the question. They said they would accept it. So then now we need a motion to appoint Jason Cron as Vice Chair.
I'll make that motion, they'll buy Jason Cron be Vice Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Ken seconds it. So Rich moves, Ken seconds to appoint Jason Cron as Vice Chair. All those in favor, when I call your name, say yes. Say no if you don't want that. Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Ken Mossman.
Hi.
Mike Perrell.
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, Commission Secretary?
Okay, I have a nomination. We're gonna nominate Jason Wienerman.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made to recommend Jason Wienerman, Commission Secretary, by Ken, second by Mike. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? I'll close nominations. Jason, will you accept the position?
If elected, yes, I will.
Okay, so now a motion would be in order to.
So I'll move too.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ken moves, Ken, Mike seconds to appoint Jason Wienerman as Secretary. Roll call, Jason Wienerman.
Abstain.
Sean Blackburn.
Aye.
Ken Mossman.
Aye.
Mike Perrell.
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So Jason Wienerman is the Secretary.
Mr. Chair, Jason, I want you to understand this. I don't know if we have it in the bylaws, but are you then the second Vice Chair? Do we have a second Vice Chair?
I would ask Angie if I was, and if so, that would be okay.
That would, because, I mean, just in case the plane goes down with the two of them, and in other words, we don't have, we have a quorum without them, you then become the Chair. We've done that on other committees.
That question came up last year and was determined.
Yeah, so that, just so that you know that, that you would be then the the next Chair, Secretary.
If so needed, I will handle the gavel.
Okay, then it can be understood by consensus of the board here.
Yep, okay. And then Board of Adjustment, I'm told that Ken Mossman, remember, we rotate that per Commissioner District, and it's Ken Mossman's turn, so he'll be on the Board of Adjustment. Plating Committee, I was a representative of that. I think we met twice last year. So it's a high volume meeting appointment. Again, somebody else wants to do it, jump in. I'll continue to do it if you want me to, but I think we met twice, like I said, last year. So we need a nomination for Plating Commission Committee.
Jason Wienerman, I would nominate Mr. Bursham.
Okay, motion's been made to nominate me.
I'll second that.
Rich Blankish seconds it. I'll accept it if that's what happens. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nomination's closed, then you need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Jason Wienerman, second.
Ken moved, Jason second. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike moved and Jason seconded to appoint me to that committee. Roll call, Jason Wienerman.
Aye.
Sean Blackburn.
Aye.
Ken Mossman.
Aye.
Mike Perrell.
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair abstains. Park Commission, Rich?
I'm currently on there.
Rich is currently on it, but.
I'd be willing to serve some more.
Okay, so I'll nominate Rich Blankish for the Park Commission. Is there a second to that?
I'll second him, so he doesn't have to do it himself.
Okay, so I moved, and Ken seconds it. Obviously, you said you'd accept. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close nominations, then a motion would be in order. So I'll move that Rich Blankish gets appointed to the Park Commission.
I'll second it.
Ken seconds that. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye when I call your name. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Ken Mossman.
Aye.
Mike Perrell.
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Abstain.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, we got election of officers. I would speculate that Commissioner Notch was probably here for the election part of it. And let's just clear the air right away. Everybody knows, everybody saw, because I asked you to watch it, the county board interaction. I would guess that there's going to be a commissioner that's not going to be happy, for whatever reason. But again, the commission picks the Chair. Thank you for doing that. I offered it to anybody else. And Joe, you might want to just weigh in from a commissioner standpoint. You felt very strongly about this. When the two-year limit was voted on, what's your?
Well, it was my understanding, and at the Park Commission meeting last week, we discussed that too, and we understood that the policy now starts. You can't make a policy that would be retroactive. So now, Jeff, you can serve for two years if you want. You could serve for one year and have somebody else come on as well. So that's what the understanding was at the Park Commission. I believe that was the understanding.
Yeah, we discussed that at length, you know, when does this start?
And again, not just for this or for me, but whenever you implement something, you can't say, you can't pass the state law and say, well, that went into effect five years ago. So, I mean, typically, that's what it would be. But again, there might be some politics involved with that, and I guess we'll sort through that however you want to do it. But just so we're all aware of that, no sense in hiding the reality. Anything else that any members want to bring up? We do good work. It's hard. We have decent discussions. I do try to keep it moving, keep the discussion going. And we make decisions, and not everybody likes what we do, but we do get along well, and we do make decisions. And we all spend a lot of time, more time on what people think we do, doing this, so.
I guess I have one question, but this is more toward the Board of Adjustment, because I'm going to be on that. Now, there's going to be two new members. Has it been suggested to them to take any of the, like, to go to the shoreline training next Thursday? So they, because back when I started, we were kind of told to go to the shoreline training, go to this company's, what was, what it's like to be on a planning commission, what to do. And some of these people that we're getting, and I'm all for new people, but they've got to be brought up to speed on how this all works. And that seems to be the only one that's gone on. The other classes, what was it, G I S that used to put them on, or?
Yes.
G T S? Do they do anything?
They're all dried up since COVID. But yes, Ken, we did send the shoreline training to you guys, to the Board of Adjustment, to the two new Board of Adjustment members. And actually, we're going to be hosting a training session with the county board, the planning commission, and the Board of Adjustment. The D N R is going to give us an online virtual shoreline training sometime in March or April. And we're going to just bring everyone together, and, you know, D N R used to do trainings, but they're not really, they're not, they're just doing virtual. So now they're going and doing them by county by county. So stay tuned for that.
And the virtual still, you don't know if that person's paying attention, or they're just sitting there putting in their time at home. It's just, I don't know that, I know George Fidler a little bit, the other new person, I don't know him at all. That's Joe's guy, the other one.
Or Rob Schwebel.
Rob Schwebel was a former deputy.
Yeah, he was a deputy. He lives out in Saint Joaquin.
And the difference with the Board of Adjustment is their decisions are final.
That's right.
So it's a little more important that you know what you're doing.
They don't get the finger pointed at them as many times as we do.
As long as it's, as long as it's just one.
Given the fact that the approval rating for variances is very high, that's one of the reasons we're having the shoreline training. But that's why they don't get picked on very much. Most variances are granted.
And I've said this before, and I'll say it again, just like Jason Wienerman said, oftentimes, people focus on the negative. When you got a board that gets along, that gets the job done, and then ninety, somebody could do the math, ninety-eight point five percent of what we recommend, the board accepts. And even we sometimes get frustrated when they don't, but ninety-eight, so we must be doing our job.
You want to see some people get in trouble if the county commissioners don't follow through on this denial of this here. There's gonna be.
Well, time will tell. Okay, anything else? If not, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
See you, guys.